This is a recording of the Southwick Public Library Board of Trustees on July 13. It is 7:03 PM and we are calling the meeting to order.
Did she get me adjusted?
Yes. We have an extra copy.
I don't see any public comments. I don't see any members of the public here. So we'll move on to communications.
Yes. So, we are, as you can tell, we are open and we're moving things to back in person, which we are very excited about. A lot of our programs are returning to in-person, although some were already scheduled virtually. So we're just going to continue with the ones that were already scheduled. Unfortunately, a lot of the children's programs this summer were already scheduled virtually because we had to plan ahead and we weren't sure what the summer was going to look like. But it's all going well. Our virtual programs have been extremely well attended. I think there was one that we had almost 70 people attend. So it was great. But we're excited to, which is ironically more than this room would hold. So it was good. So we're returning to in-person. Our craft and chat people are back in-person and our cookbook club and book club. So almost everything is fully back in-person. And I have been working very closely with the Board of Health about the return of the cookbook club because that's one that I was very concerned about having come back, given everything that's going on still. So what we did was, with her help, I drafted a waiver to give to all the participants. Just because even before COVID, I feel like there was kind of a concern of, you know, with any type of potluck, you know, there's always the concern that food poisoning, anything like that. So we did make a waiver and we also included parts of that being, you know, if you're sick, don't come. If anybody in your household is sick, don't cook and bring anything in. So we're just going to have everybody sign off on that, just so that they're aware, you know, that they're taking the risk if they do choose to attend. So we just want to be safe and do it as best as possible. An opening day for summer reading was Saturday, the 26th. It went great.
I drove by, but there was no parking. I was going to. There was no parking all the way up to the high school.
Yeah, we had to have the animal trailers in the lot. So we had two llamas and the pony. And then some chickens showed up. I don't know from where.
Uninvited.
Yes, yes. I think there was somebody with a food pantry brought their chickens because they had to table. So, I mean, we're a farming community. It is what it is. They were a hit. But a couple of people said that they think that there was, you know, obviously I couldn't get a good full count of everybody who attended, but they said that there was record attendance. So that was great. Yeah. And Papa Largic did his balloon animals, which are always a hit. And so, and yeah, I think it went really well. We were lucky the weather held out and it went great. And Heather signed up, almost 50 people for summer reading that day.
Nice.
Which is excellent. Yeah. So hopefully, hopefully next year we'll be able to do something just as fun, although this year's theme was animals, which when you have animals, it's kind of a surefire hit that people are going to show up. Next year's theme is like ocean and sea animals, so I'm not sure how it's going to translate. But we'll figure something out. We'll figure something out.
You can break horseshoe crabs without Pat Felsch.
Where? Who has horseshoe crabs?
Turtles.
On the aquarium.
We could go to the pond and get turtles and we could get fish from the pond.
Does that lead us to the turtles?
Turtle races.
We used to have turtle races. What's the, I'll just go to my pond, I'll get a bunch of fish and turtles and we could learn about the local.
There we go. Perfect. We're all set. And so as of the beginning of this month, we've loaned out about 72 packets of seeds from our seed library, which is pretty fantastic, named after Suzanne Davis, which I think there was an article in the paper and so it's been getting around. So it's been going really well and people really like it.
Will there be a time where they bring results in or show and tell or whatever?
We're hopefully, as, it's been a busy summer with being short-staffed, so hopefully, you know, as it progresses, we'll have like people do like pictures or bring in something or, we're not collecting seeds back. I just decided it would be too much because I'm not a gardener and I don't trust that I can tell this seed is like, you know, something either invasive or, God forbid, not legal or something like that. So we're just, we're only going to.
Everything's legal.
Okay, here we go. So we're good. But still, I don't trust myself to tell the difference. So we're not going to take anything back and if we take donations, we're just going to take it from, you know, a verified organization. But it's been going fantastic, you know, hopefully in the fall, we can promote something with the pumpkin seeds or anything like that. So we're having fun. I think I decided going forward, going back to the virtual events, that, you know, we found out that some things just work better virtually. So some programs, I think we're still really going to keep virtual, especially with the ones I run for like genealogy, which I did last week. It's just so much easier to do it virtual because the pull-down screen here, you know, people can't really see that, but if I bring it up on the computer and share my screen, we can zoom in, we can go from page to page really easily. So I think we are going to continue to do virtual events going forward and the Friends funded the Zoom for another year. So we'll still have an account, we'll still do some events online because it just, there's some things that it just works so much better for. So a happy accident from all the, all these, all the virtual events in the last year. You know, we just found out that it's a format that it works, people like it. You know, we can get people from other towns or, you know, I've been told by a lot of working people that, you know, instead of coming home and rushing to eat dinner and then rush to come back to the library, they can just come home and eat dinner while watching the program. So, I mean, it doesn't get people in the door, but it still keeps them involved. So I think it's still kind of a valuable thing we can have going forward. And then the happy news is we got notified that we got two grants. So we were awarded the Sarah Gillette Grant again this year. And the application was for, I put in a request for funds to kind of boost our movie collection and things especially of interest to seniors. So like certain series that they like, because there's been a lot of people coming in, you know, a lot of people and a lot of seniors. And I think especially again this fall as the new variants are out and all, who knows what will happen, but, you know, there may be a time that they have to go back indoors again. So if we have a better collection, then we can better serve them in that way. And we did also receive the LSTA grant. So we got $7,500. And I will probably say this wrong, Jennifer, it's the Library Services and Technology Act grant that they have people apply for annually and the money comes from the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. And the one we applied for this year was Pathways to Success. So, you know, career skills, events around that, building our collection in that area.
That's the one Sandy.
Yes, and I have to, I have to reach out to Sandy.
All I know now.
Yeah, it's on my agenda to reach out to all our partners. So I have to contact Sandy, the Westfield Chamber of Commerce and everybody that we said we were going to partner with. And so the grant runs from the beginning of October for a year. So come October, we'll really start hitting the ground with events and, which also means that part of the grant was getting some type of barriers. I've been talking about that for a while, for like quiet study spaces in the corner. I did talk with Janine Laporte. She's fine with us shifting the gallery down. So we have that corner to put in hopefully two study spaces that can maybe fit like four to five people. So like, you know, like when the Food Bank is out there having their meeting tonight, you know, they could have a quiet space instead of being kind of out in the open or tutoring, anything like that. So, hey, so we're pretty excited about that. That's another part of the grant, as well as a new digital, I think it's called Brainfuse, a new digital database. Because we stopped using the Career Accelerator one because it just, it wasn't up to date and it wasn't, it wasn't well-used. And this, this one is great because they actually have like chat services. So you can talk with somebody about building your resume or your career. So that's also really exciting. So I need to kind of, I just found out like two days ago, so I haven't contacted any of our partners yet, but we'll do that. I'll send a press release to the town hall so they know. They have, they have a nice like pre-written press release that kind of, you know, toots our own horn. So we'll send that over so they're aware. Because I think it's, it's a pretty big deal. I mean, it's a, that's a fairly large-sized grant, so.
You may want to send a press release to the Westfield News and the Republican, etc.
Yep, yep. Yep, I will send it out to all our, all our normal places just to get the, get the word out. So I was very happy in a year that they said they were going to have a lot of people apply. It was nice to be able to be awarded the grant and awarded what we asked for, so.
Congratulations to you because that was a lot of work.
That was a lot of work. It was a lot of work. But, um, yeah, now we just have to kind of figure out events and programs and Heather's going to work with me to do some things for teens too. So, yeah, it should be good.
Probably before we move on to anything else, as Maria gave me a quick note, we need to introduce a new person. What I've only seen on Zoom, when she walked in, I wasn't sure who she was because I'd never seen her in person.
Then I opened my mouth and you were like, oh, I know her.
So.
Hi, I'm Jen Balden.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thanks.
I'm Tammy.
Hi Tammy.
I'm Michael.
Right, I'm Maria.
Maria, I feel like I know you.
Ooh, it could have been.
Your face looks familiar. So you can.
I live up at the former American Inn. I'm a transplant to Western Mass.
I don't know. Never mind. I know your face too.
You know me.
I think so. What's your name?
Carol Garrick.
Did you go to Powdermills School?
No. I did. If you go to the Levin Precinct too, you've seen Carol at the election. That's probably where it is.
That's right.
I usually am begging for extra stickers, so if you're in charge of stickers, I know you really well.
And I'm Tracy.
I'm with Tracy.
Thank you.
And I'm Lynn, you know, we've emailed.
And that's it for communications. So we just have minutes. I have lots of minutes for everyone. Okay, so these are April and we'll just pass them around. And I did notice, and the other two are just pretty much blank because there were meeting. So I did notice two corrections in the April minutes. Maria.
Okay.
Under old business, under gallery move, it's Janine, not Genie.
My name's spelt wrong.
Spell it?
G E A, not G, J E A N I N E.
Okay.
You make, I've been, I've been here since nine o'clock this morning. I can't spell. I was really struggling with that one.
My name is spelt wrong.
Oh my goodness, really?
Yeah, it's okay. I have to remember when I sign my name.
It should be a capital B for one thing.
Well, that's, that's your last grammar control.
I haven't made that. And you're next. You're doing too well with it.
But there's also two Ls.
She's not as much fun as whoever did it before.
B I S S A I L L O N. So you need a capital. Oh yeah, of course. Yeah, if you just ask one of the ladies at the desk, they'll pass it.
A little B.
Don't worry, I have to spell it out too when I sign my name because it, blame Sean, don't blame me.
And then I did, on page two, under, or side two, under new business number eight, I don't know, I don't know for Heather's sake, you know, maybe it's best to just have, you know, Heather's returning from maternity leave, so just in case she doesn't want her son's name in the, in the public record.
Oh, I guess we asked about it, that's how.
Yeah, yeah, it came up, but I, you know, I think just maybe, I don't know.
I agree, absolutely agree.
From maternity leave.
Yeah, and she will return in late May. I think that's good.
Right. And how many pop-up book sales did we have, two or three?
I think we had three.
Yeah, I think so.
There was quite a few.
Because they worked out well.
They did, they did.
It was fun.
You're going to miss it.
I know where the South Hadley Library is.
No, 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 no.
That was a new building five or six years ago because I was a resident.
It is a really nice library.
I looked at the library and saw the name of the director. Yeah, he's the guy.
Yeah, yeah, it is, it's a new one and so, and they have a Friends group.
I know.
So I can take part there. I'm not getting into the politics part. Do you have my notices about the?
Yes.
May meeting and the June meeting?
Yep, I did, I did, I did edit the May one just because of how the town clerk wanted us to organize them. So there's the May and June is in here.
Open, no quorum.
Close. We keep it simple. And then June.
That's because of the election. It's, I, yeah.
No, it wasn't the elections.
No, I didn't.
There was a reason though.
I know, of course.
Because we had it on a different night. It was Monday, not Tuesday. That's right. It was Monday. And there was no quorum.
Right, it just messed me up.
And we just figured everyone, she didn't like my one sentence.
I know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted to make some kind of notice in the record as to why we didn't meet, you know.
Oh yeah, of course.
I accept April, May and Junes.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Any opposed?
June should be coming around. Do we have enough? I have an extra.
It says canceled.
Okay.
It has to be approved as amended.
There you go.
I ended up with two. Sorry, dear.
Souvenir-ish for you.
Piggy, piggy. So Aprils have to be approved as amended.
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
See, the governor's order had gone through the 13th or 14th. So then you were going back to regular meetings and then the town clerk's office is.
Oh, no, no, no.
You can't do that. You can't change it from Zoom to in-person.
Without a two-week notice or you had.
Other people have done that in the past, but probably in June, you couldn't do it.
Right.
I don't know if it's taking minutes.
Yeah, so technically we're approving the amended April minutes and May minutes. The June is just kind of a memo that we didn't, we didn't meet. So just to make that clear for the recording.
I don't know who's recording it, so, oh, for the recording itself, yeah. I don't know if it's taking minutes.
Okay, before we move on from there, we do need someone to take over the recording duties in terms of keeping minutes, which aren't of course not as exact as a stenographer or something in a courtroom. That's why our minutes tell you what occurred, but they don't go into an awful lot.
And we also do need to have somebody, since Carol's leaving, to come in every other week and sign the.
Professor and a mini, right?
Are you able to do every other week?
And I can volunteer as a backup.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't matter what time of day you come in. Heather can have the folder.
I always went in on Monday, well.
I was going to say it's going to have to be a time they're open until eight.
Before Heather did it. I get it Mondays when I could have come in on Tuesday as well.
Yeah, she usually likes them done on Monday if possible. And in the evening is fine. I'll just have her get it ready and leave it out for you.
Yeah, she just leaves it on the desk.
Yep. And then the first time, we can give you instructions on what to do. So Tammy is signing and Maria is a backup.
But maybe you should also get an alternate in case Tammy can't make it.
I think Maria.
I'm volunteering, okay.
All right, I'll let Heather know tomorrow. When does this start? When is Carol effectively done?
I will, I, who knows? What's the date today?
The 13th.
Today is July 13th.
Why don't I say the last day of July?
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Because then I can still come in and get the bills done the next day.
Yep.
When are you moving out of town?
God, who knows, Mike?
But I, I mean.
It's all hanging up here, but everything is set, but the lawyer's.
It's somewhere in August or later.
We're shooting for an August 18th today, I heard. August 18th is what they're hoping.
Okay, so if you resign as of July 31st, I just meant that you were still living in town through July 31st.
Oh, yes, yes.
Just so Michelle, the town clerk, doesn't go like, wait a minute, how can she be a trustee if she moved out of town two weeks ago?
I paid my taxes.
That's all.
I did, I paid them last week, so.
Make sure you get credit at the closing.
Absolutely.
Okay, now we can move on to the directors report.
I think we just need to determine who's, who's doing the minutes.
Do I see a volunteer?
Not me. Gee, I would, but.
I can do it in the future, but don't ask me to do it tonight.
I think tonight, we'll have to rely on Lynn.
Okay.
Give me if you just translate the recording.
Yeah, I can do that easy enough. Okay, yes, so Jen is, Jen is doing minutes for the future. Do you prefer Jen and Jennifer?
The minutes that we just approved now.
Jen, but only with two minutes.
Get them done and get them pulled in.
Okay.
Thank you for volunteering. That's one area I won't, I would sign, but I'm not so limited.
In terms of Carol's resignation, typically the way they do with all elected positions, the selectmen are going through this right now, the school committee. A member of the school committee has resigned. So their, the school committee apparently is soliciting names. I don't know how they're doing it. After their deadline, which I think is the 20-something of this month, they'll have to have a joint meeting with the selectmen and vote on who the replacement is.
So it's not a special election or anything?
No, no, no. And it would be the same thing, it would be us sitting at a selectmen's meeting around the table and they select a person.
That's how I got back on because I took a break when I was caring for my grandfather and then I was able to.
And I took over Nancy's done spot.
I know nothing. I don't even know how many years I've been doing this.
Well, you've been doing it longer than me. I, informally, we've got at least one person who's interested.
Oh, good, nice, good. Anyone I know just here?
Someone from the cultural council.
Oh, okay, that's good. Pat?
No.
No.
No, no, I don't play in her sandbox and she just.
No, okay. Well, that's good that there's someone. You'd still have a quorum even though.
Right.
I mean, if everyone was able to.
You didn't want to go home with any papers.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to put you on the side.
Maria's going to have to be here.
No, I won't. Put them neatly into a file.
There you go. That's what I like to hear.
Oh, Cindy.
Is there another person on the board that's here?
Nope, this, this up everybody, right? Six of you.
Double.
It's late, I had to do a double count. How many people are here?
I had to remember to get in my car and drive here.
Check another back.
Is there an Australian?
Yeah, this is July.
May.
Yeah, May, June and July.
Do I have two Mays?
This is, this is why we were doing things one at a time as I figured.
I have two May's here, the May. April, May and June, okay.
Yeah, so these are, and just a, you know, little clarification for Jen, these are just our monthly reports where we keep track of circulation, reference questions, new card signups. And I think when it's, when you're looking at this year's and the end of last fiscal year, the beginning of this one, the numbers are all a little out of whack because of COVID. So the numbers aren't, you know, looking like what they should be. But we still did end this fiscal year with some decent numbers. I mean, at one point we were doing 300 curbside pickups a month, which is pretty great and it takes a lot of effort for our, for our circ staff to do that. So, so that's fantastic.
Especially disinfecting everything, they did a great job.
They did a very good job, a very good job. And then I don't, I don't have the July's report in front of me, I don't think I made copies of that one, but we, was it June? Maybe it was June. Can I see your July report? Yeah, July, what do we have for new card? There was one of them that we had new cards. June, yeah, June 2021, we had 27 new cards, which is pretty fantastic. So, so that's good.
Now, would that be the kindergarten kids?
Nope, they didn't. This is just a month when lots of people came in and signed up, so.
Nice.
So that was, that was pretty good. Ironically, when they all came to sign up, they all came at kind of slightly the same time, like in chunks. So we have like chunks of six cards, we're trying to make it one time, but no, it was good to see so many new cards being, being created. So the people are, I think people are getting comfortable, they're coming back. We've always been very cautious with cleaning and everything like that. So I think we've hopefully made a good example that, you know, we take things seriously and we, we're concerned for everybody's health and safety, but, you know, we want to make sure that we can remain open.
Well, the key thing to this whole virus thing is you were closed for a couple of months, but beyond that, you were open. Could be by appointment so that you have a limited number of people at a time.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think, I think it's important to note that, you know, we were, we were open before the town hall was open for the public. You know, we've been open longer than, I mean, some mass libraries are still just getting back to opening.
Westfield only opened in the last month.
Yeah.
Amen, yeah.
And that, that can be because of a number of things. A lot of places lost a lot of staff from, you know, people just resigning because of the pandemic. So we, we were lucky in that aspect that we didn't lose a lot of people, but I'm glad that we were able to stay open and stay open safely for as long as we did. You know, we, I think our staff did a great job, so.
Good.
So I know I ask this every time, we don't need to approve the minutes, not the minutes, the statistics, right?
No.
Okay. I did not have anything under old business because we haven't met in two months. So it's, it's all kind of transferred its way over to new business. I kept the COVID-19 response on there as, as usual, we're, we're open, no appointments, masks are not required for people who've been vaccinated. And, you know, we're not quarantining our items anymore, but we're also, you know, still regularly in contact with the Board of Health if there's a question or concern, so.
Just be concerned, keep an eye, the numbers are going up.
They are.
So just make sure you're careful.
Yep, yep, and she's, Tammy, Tammy Spencer has been fantastic. You know, if there's ever a concern, you know, we're in touch with her, but she's also in touch with us. So she notices something or she gets word of something that we may not have heard of, she is on it.
Yeah, she is.
She's great.
We work together a little bit.
And then I was approached by a group, they are called the Voices Rising Together's Climate and Environmental Justice Group. That is a long name. And basically what they do, it's a group of local residents. They're recruiting libraries, like Granville, Tallinn, and then maybe some of the Connecticut libraries that are just below the border. And they're planning events for Climate Awareness Week, which is in late September. And they, they wanted us to be on board and I said we would, so we're, we're planning. I think they're gonna do the big kickoff event at Westfield because they have the theater. And then we are gonna try to do maybe one or two events here relating to climate change, sustainability, something like that. So we're kind of in the beginning stages of planning, but, um, we are, I was asked by a local resident to get involved, so I, I did.
Now, you said this is a local group, but are they connected to a national?
There, there is a national group. There's, um, there's a national group that does, they're called the Climate Crew. And I'll pass this around. They have, um, oops, I'll keep one. I think there should be enough for everybody. They, they recruit organizations to become a climate resilience hub. So I think basically what that means is, um, you know, there, as you can see on the form that's coming around, there's different levels. You know, obviously, we won't be able to serve as an overnight supply-equipped emergency shelter. But, um, you know, even, even if we could potentially join as a level one, you know, basically, all that means is that we'll display their literature, we'll put up a decal, and we just host one educational event per year, which is, is not a lot. So, um, so I think I was going to put it forward. If, if the trustees are interested, I can pursue this as potentially making us a climate resilience hub. You know, obviously, we'll, we'll probably only have to, I think we'll only feasibly do the level one. Because we, I don't think we have the capabilities to be an emergency shelter or anything extreme like that. But, you know, if we can, if we can do, you know, just level one, we, having one event a year, that's not a big deal at all. We can easily do that.
Costs you anything to?
No, 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 unless, I think the only cost would be unless we were to pay for a presenter for that, that one event.
I just meant, you know, the selectman might go crazy.
No, no, no.
You have to pay the thousand dollars a year.
Nope. No, no cost, no cost. Yeah, so basically, all you, what you do is, um, is I would need to sign the memorandum of understanding, basically saying, this is what we agree to, this is what they agree to, and what we together agree to.
I think this is a great idea, especially as the weather's getting worse. You know? Yeah. A lot of people don't know these things anymore, you know? I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, and we don't, we don't want to, um, you know, I don't, I don't want to make it too, what's the word? Polarizing for people. You know, we, we want to be apart, but, you know.
Right.
If, we don't want to be in people's space about it. If they choose not to, then.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if they choose not to, then that's fine, but, you know, at least we have the resources for people who are interested.
Right.
Crew is currently being incubated by the Better Future Project, a federally recognized 501(c)(3) organization. But they're being incubated.
So maybe a motion to.
I'll make a motion to support joining as a level one.
Yes.
Of the climate resilience hub program.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is this the same group that is approached two, six months ago saying they were interested in doing something, but didn't know if something was?
Yes, yeah. It was, I think it was just a couple of months ago now. And, um, you know, they, they talked to me and they talked to Lise, who's the director up in Granville. And we kind of came back to them and said, you know, we, it's a great idea, but we need more of a direction. Like what you're, what you're looking for, what you want to do. So.
I wonder if your education, I don't know much about what kind of programs they do, but I wonder if they have one focused on like how the weather changes affect farming, that the action.
Yeah, I mean, I think when it comes to the educational programs, we are responsible for finding and booking them. So we can book, you know, and it doesn't even have to be one event. I mean, if it's something that people enjoy, we can potentially do multiples. We can tie it into the seed library. So there's, yeah. So if you know of anybody, Tammy, you can send them along.
She's on the egg.
Yeah, yeah. She's got connections.
Our meeting is tomorrow, so I'll just present this.
Okay, yeah, yeah. And just, and just say that, you know, we're working.
It's not like it has to be tomorrow.
Yeah, we're working on joining and, you know. Yeah, so that might be something of interest.
Maybe we should do like a joint event or something.
Great. Um, next I have is the survey, which we normally do in April, but it's been an off year. So we, we did not do it. And I'm thinking maybe it's just best to, to wait until next year.
I wait until next year. Yep, absolutely.
So, yeah, because I, I just, I wouldn't even know where to begin.
Well, you're still unsettled.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, no, just let everything settle down.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry to be a pain.
No, no, no.
Are any of the grants, do they use the survey information, though?
The, um, the surveys, what the grants require is they require us to have a strategic plan, which we do, I think ours expires in 2023. And for when we write the plan, every time, we kind of do a, a big survey. So this, this kind of annual survey is more for just our own information. So, yeah, we do, and I think, so we'll probably have to start planning in 2022 early for the next strategic plan. So then we'll, then we'll do like a big comprehensive survey. And I know that sounds horrible and patrons aren't gonna want to look at it, but we'll make, we'll make it interesting, so.
Give them prizes.
Give them, I think, prizes, freebies. Everybody loves freebies. So, um, yeah, I think I'm just gonna push the survey off until, once, because we have two new staff members, which I'll talk about later. But we're all just, we're getting, we're all just getting settled, I think. So we're just gonna, gonna kind of wait.
Well, you were on the drop for six months before the virus.
Yes, so. But we survived. We survived. And for the Staff Development Day in August, because we have a lot of new people, I did talk to Carl about the possibility, and other libraries do it, of closing for a day and just having like a staff development day, because we've never done it. And it's hard to do a meeting, like a staff meeting, because not everybody's here at the same time. So, and he, he was in approval of it. He just told us to wait, you know, obviously, until after school closes. So I'm thinking in August, maybe just a Thursday, when we're only open ten to five, just closing for a day. And, you know, we can get pizza for lunch or something and do like, I know, everybody hates like those icebreaker type things. But we, I think we need to kind of, now that we have new people, we just kind of need to come together.
Because the Westfield Atheneum has closed.
Yeah.
Every couple of years for a day.
Yeah.
Other libraries do it all the time.
Exactly.
They don't get pizza at the schools.
Oh, well, we'll get pizza. We'll get pizza. Yeah, so I think as long as we publicize it and post it well enough in advance, then.
Yep.
So if, is everybody in a?
Sure.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, we'll, we'll figure out a date and go from there.
At some point, there needs to be a line item in the budget, you know, so you can do stuff.
Yeah.
There's nothing in there. You're borrowing it from materials or from wherever.
Yeah, I think, even if we could do something like this annually, it would be just, it would just be nice to have everybody.
Yeah.
Get together. And I think we need to blow off some steam after this year, so it might be good.
Now, I know you have it called, you know, Development Day, and I know it's, but can you have something? I'm sure you will, like some kind of staff appreciation.
Oh, yeah, yep, yep.
Because you guys have all done one half of a job.
Yes, yes, yes. I know usually I get them, it would be nice to just do something. I, I usually get them like some small gifts around Christmas.
Do we have an account to do something for the staff?
How much do we have on the?
As trustees?
Yeah.
I don't know, because I, I don't get the, I used to get a notice of how much money we have in the trustees. But Heather wasn't aware, I guess, that I always got a copy. And I won't be getting a copy anymore, but so I don't know. But there's certainly enough to.
Yeah, I can, I can have her.
Her was small.
I mean.
You know, like it's three.
Party every year.
Three thousand or something like that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, I mean, I mean, I give, I give, I get like donuts and stuff every so often. And we do like, I do gifts around Christmas time, something small, obviously. We took the conflict of interest class. But, um, it might be nice to have something coming from either the trustees or the friends, just to say thank you to them.
So from the trustees, since we probably won't be meeting in August before your, your event, is let's approve, assuming we've got the money.
I'm sure, I'm sure we do, yeah.
Then let's approve two hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars.
Oh, you definitely have that much.
To play with.
Okay.
Yeah.
Icebreakers are more fun when there's toys.
It's true.
What was that?
Icebreakers are more fun with toys.
So the trustees are approving two hundred, two hundred and fifty?
You can get a lot of fidgets on Amazon for like twenty bucks. You can really go crazy.
Is the idea to have this stuff for that staff development day?
It.
Or just any?
Whatever you want to use it for. You're the professional running.
But you can't pay your mortgage.
No. Like I said, we all took the conflict of interest class.
We need a motion for that, yes.
Yeah, that'd be good to just.
You know, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay.
Okay, I'll do that. Thank you. So our Coordinator of Children's Services position, which used to be Margot's position, part-time, we got made full-time last year before the pandemic, and then we couldn't hire. But we did hire Molly. I think I saw you talking with her the other day, Mike. Yep, Molly is fantastic. She comes to us from the Hartford School System. And she's an art teacher.
Nice.
And she has been here about a little over a week now, I think. And she's hit the ground running. She's been, she's been fantastic so far. She's, she's on it. So I think we have a really great person for our children's department.
Excellent.
And second, next down is our children's librarian. We have, her name is Riley, Riley Seaver. She'll be starting tomorrow, actually. So for the first time in a long time, we are gonna have a fully staffed children's room. So I think we're gonna have a really good team in there. I think Molly has some fantastic ideas. And her experience in the school system, I think, will help us a lot with doing outreach. That was a big goal when we made that position full-time, is we need to, we need to take it outside of our walls. So I think, I think she'll do a really, really good job.
So is this new person from the local area, or?
Uh, Molly, Molly's from Connecticut.
Right.
And Riley is from Tallinn.
Oh, okay.
That's good.
Yep. Yep, so she'll, so Molly will be in their daytimes, Riley will be in their evenings and Thursday, Friday mornings, so.
Excellent.
We're gonna be fully staffed, so I'm hoping we'll be able to kick off. We've been getting a lot of questions about when our kids' events are gonna be starting back in person. So I think they're gonna try for, if not August, then definitely September, to get things really going. I want to, I want to give them some time to kind of settle in, because this, this is new for, for them. They're both new to libraries. Which, that's Paul checking the door. Yep, nope. We're making sure we're locked up for the night. So, yeah, both, both of the ladies are new to libraries, which I think is, is, is strong, because they bring a different perspective. So I think, you know, obviously, it takes a little bit more time to, to get used to the, all the ins and outs that we do. But I think, you know, I think they'll do really great.
In, in talking to Molly, she seems to bring an artistic.
Yes.
Type bend.
Yes, yeah, she, she was an art teacher in Hartford, so she's, she's extremely creative. And so I think she'll really, and I think that's gonna be really great in, in programming for the kids.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is she gonna keep Lego Club?
I will, if, if you have a strong urge for Lego Club, I will pass it along. She was talking about it the other day, so.
With my parent hat on?
Yes. Molly, Lego Club. Yeah, she was talking about it today, so I'm sure Lego Club will pop up in one form or another again soon. And then we did hire Kelechi. She is our summer page, so she'll be with us till the beginning of August. And she is fantastic as well. She has taken to shelving and she's, you know, she's always looking for different projects, willing to help out, so. It's been great. It's, it's been great.
So what did you say her name was?
Kelechi.
And how would that be spelled?
Uh, K E L, K E L E C H I.
Oh, okay.
And she, she, she was a patron before she went away to school, so she, she knows the library. She's familiar with us, so, and she's been, she's been wonderful. So we're, 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 as of tomorrow, we'll be fully staffed. Which is, yeah, no, I know, I know. And then the last thing is, I did redo our research.
It's been a long day.
Resource reaction form, very basic. This is just if people have complaints about the materials and stuff. I didn't change anything other than one line, but I brought it to you guys, just so you have it, because it is part of our policies. And I, I basically just added, I did highlight it in red, but then I photocopied it in black and white by accident. So it's basically the, the last sentence of the paragraph at the top, saying that I'll bring it to the trustees if, if it needs to be discussed further. So this is if anybody has any complaints about anything, or services, policies, anything else.
You're just trying to get more public comment.
Yes, I know. What's that?
If someone has a complaint about materials, is this the same form that they would use?
Yes, yep, yep.
In the last ten years, I think we've had two patrons maybe.
The first time I was here.
To come into this room. We're sitting there and the person is sitting in one chair by themselves. And I think one of the times, one of the two times, was they didn't want to pay for a book that they could chew up or something. And I don't remember what.
Should you capitalize?
The kids had ruined the book.
One, one of them did want a baby changing facility in the restroom. Which apparently has been added to, but I haven't been in there to see it.
I missed it myself.
Could we make a line for materials then?
Oh, yeah, we probably should. So I'm gonna say line F is materials.
Maybe E.
Oh.
Make other F.
I'm gonna say this again. It's been a long day.
Yes.
We woke up to them working on the gas line outside of our house at like six in the morning. And it's like, why? 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 And then tonight, when I leave here, my husband's like, we're going to the gym. I'm gonna die. I want to go to bed.
Oh, well.
Oh, well, what am I gonna do? He doesn't have to walk the dogs for three miles in the morning, though, so he doesn't know how tired I am. So if you guys will just approve it with the amendments.
Can I ask one more question about this form?
Yes.
Do you think it would be worthwhile to add with a name, address, and telephone number? Like library card number, to see if you're an actual patron?
Okay. Okay, great. Any other amendments or anything that anybody noticed? Okay, so if you guys would, um.
Wait, one more.
Yeah, yeah. Well, she's, she's on top of it. Did I not have email?
I don't like whining people.
So you make it as hard as possible to fill out the form.
If you're writing a commendation, you're gonna be like, you can have my email.
Yes.
If you're whining, you're gonna be like.
Okay. So if we'll approve to capitalize the D and director, add a line for materials, and add the library card number and the email.
Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve it as amended?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then just the, the last thing on here was what we already did before the meeting, was just a reminder to everybody. But I think as of now, everybody's done the conflict of interest. Jen's just gonna get me the certificate. And the open meeting law, I sent you the file by email, too. So everybody has the open meeting law file in their inboxes. And, um, and everybody's signed the forms, which I'll get over to the town hall tomorrow or Thursday. And that is all I have. Is this your last meeting, Carol?
Yes. Should we all cry a little bit?
Oh.
Yes.
If we'd have known, we'd have brought snacks.
No, no, I'll be here Monday to sign bills. Because this is the, the Monday coming up is the.
The bills.
Lock her in the bathroom so she can't move. Yeah. We're gonna lock you in the bathroom so you can't go. Where are you moving?
No.
South Valley? Not too far. They have a beautiful library in South Valley.
Yes, they do. Yes, they do, yes. Well, my first teaching job was in South Valley.
Okay.
Yeah, and one of the kids in my class, in my first teaching class back in 1956, just retired from her job, and she told me she wants to go to lunch, she's 75, and she was in my first. But I, I had just turned 21 and she was 11.
Wow.
So, you know, but I, I laugh, I mean, she's just a cute kid, but it's nice, and she said, a lot of the kids are still around, you know, so she's going to keep in touch, so now I have a whole bunch of new kids. But I was nine years there before my kids were born.
Wow.
And we moved here and came to South.
You're a celebrity everywhere you go.
Yes, yes. You develop lots of minds.
We try.
In fact, I met Carol outside of town hall a week or two weeks ago, and she was commenting to people going into town hall to pay, pay their real estate tax, did I have you in school? Yes.
Yes, it's Eric.
Yeah, several people in that situation.
Because she was the teacher you feared.
Ryan, I can't think of his name. I wouldn't know what I was going through. And he inter, we had said something, and he said, yes, that's right, I remember that, or something, I remember you taught me that, yeah, run into them all the time.
So our next meeting is, um, the, I don't know the exact date, it's whatever the second Tuesday of September is, which I don't have offhand.
Second Tuesday of September?
Yep.
Second.
The 14th.
No, sorry, the 14th. Okay, so September 14th is our next meeting, um.
Can I just check something real quick?
Yeah, yeah. And then, Mike, I have the trustee's handbook that I have a spare copy of to give to Jen, because who doesn't, I don't know if you, I do, you've given her one, but I can give her this one.